It is 7:00 PM on Monday, March 16th, 2020, and I call to order this regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. In attendance this evening are board members Peter Tensing, Allegra Smieszek, Christine Malick, Tim Paulus, and I am Crystal Brackey. Superintendent Yunowski joins us at the table along with student board members Lucy Luna and Diane Meseo. Board member Paula Cole is unable to join us this evening. Although we are all experiencing and working through circumstances we might not have imagined even just a couple of weeks ago at our last board meeting, I think it's more important than ever that we stay centered on Richfield Public Schools' mission statement that we inspire and empower each individual to learn, grow, and excel as we conduct our meeting this evening. For people that are going to be watching this video online, I also want to note that we have modified the setup of our boardroom a bit this evening to incorporate some social distancing, best practices for those of us at the board table, as well as members of the audience where chairs are quite far apart from one another this evening. So please, I say that just to bear with us as we adjust to these changing times here in our meeting as well. So our first item of business this evening is to approve the agenda before us, and I would like to propose amending the agenda that was posted on Friday to remove any non-essential items and set them aside for a future meeting. Specifically, I would like to strike public comment, as we have no one here this evening who came to make a comment, the superintendent update items A and B, and all items in the old business section of the agenda. So the new agenda would therefore include superintendent update item C, the coronavirus update, the consent agenda, and the new business items, all of which involve critical personnel, facilities, and budget action items for the district. We will also keep advanced planning time just for any other immediate issues that board members would like to raise this evening. Are there any questions or discussion about this proposed amending of the agenda? If none, we could entertain a motion to move the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Paulus and a second by Ms. Malick. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the agenda is approved, so we move directly into the superintendent update item on the coronavirus and where we are in our planning and response as a district.
All right, so we have communication of the next iteration coming out this evening to families, and we continue to develop plans. My goal is to give an overview and then be available for questions, because things continue to evolve both on the local, the state, and the national level. And so what our goal is, is to just provide an overview and some clarity around some of the things that are connected to how we are going to be conducting our business. Through a governor direction and an executive order, schools are officially closed across the entire state of Minnesota starting tomorrow, I'm sorry, starting Wednesday through March 27th, and then obviously we move to spring break. And so there is an eight-day gap in schooling across the state of Minnesota and a closure. That closure is a time where educators across the state are expected to be planning for distance learning. So the first thing I want to talk about briefly is distance learning, sometimes called e-learning, but we want to be clear about what distance learning means in Richfield, and we believe it means across the state. As you may know, we sent home students with packets of work to do, some assignments and some learning opportunities. That is not e-learning and that is not distance learning. That is something that we felt that was important to do as educators, to prepare our students over these next eight days to be able to continue learning from their homes as we are planning out the next steps in distance learning. Distance learning, as we begin to understand it, is trying to provide as full of an instructional opportunity for all of our students if they are not physically located in our schools, and our teachers providing education to our students if they are also, the staff are not necessarily located in our schools. And so the goal will be to create and implement a new instructional model that we would be utilizing or be prepared to utilize, depending on what occurs on April 6th. And so we don't know what is going to occur from the governor after March 27th, but in the directive, the expectation is, is that we are developing up to eight weeks of distance learning and distance learning options. And so we are setting about over those next eight weeks, or over these next two weeks, to prepare for the possibility of whether or not we will be physically located in schools or not. And so we sent home all of our 612 students with Chromebooks. Our teachers and teams were in today. Our teachers and teams will be in again tomorrow, and we will begin doing that work to doing distance learning. And then we will also be sending our teachers home at some point in the near future and continuing our preparation for distance learning and practicing as we collaborate and work together in different locations. The next thing in the governor's expectations is for us to provide childcare, childcare to workers in the emergency fields or in the healthcare fields. And so we have launched an innovative partnership with Richfield Fun Club, and Richfield Fun Club is currently hoping to continue serving Richfield students, and so they are planning to stay open. We are partnering with them to expand their services, which means we'll be expanding space. We will be providing breakfast and lunch, and we will be adding to that group healthcare and emergency workers' children. There is some paperwork to be sent out tomorrow for registration, and we'll begin or anticipate being able to begin serving emergency workers' children starting as early as Wednesday. We are also recognizing that with staff who might be providing some of these services or might be providing the food services that I'll be describing in a minute, they may need childcare to be able to provide the services we're going to be asking of them. And so, given the capacity, or we are hoping to have the capacity, we will also be expanding that childcare or hope to expand that childcare to serve our own staff students when they are in and providing those much-needed required services. But additionally, we are looking at food for families and making sure that we are providing meals. Starting tomorrow, breakfast and lunch, we are offering on a grab-and-go basis at STEM, Centennial, Sheridan Hills, Richfield Middle School, and Richfield High School. And this is all going out in communication to families. And then we anticipate being able to begin with some bus routes, dropping off on the bus route food to students and food to families as we continue on. At present, our food drop will definitely be available to our students, but we have also partnered with Sheridan Storey, who today, just today, dropped off 700 meals at our school that we will also be able to utilize and distribute on our buses. So we'll be looking at food distribution and bus routes to do that, so we do it both onsite in our schools, but then also throughout the community. Childcare, to make sure that we can continue on the services. And then the big work for our educators over those next eight days is to create the possibility for distance learning, should this extend beyond the time that we are looking at. At this point, I will then pause and see if there are questions.
Also knowing this is a lot to soak in for our students who are thinking about what is the rest of our school year going to look like.
Just a detailed question on the grab-and-go. That sounds to me as if, does that work as grab-and-go, basically walking into a building, grabbing your food, and walking out?
We are currently in the process of actually setting it up so it would continue outside, and so just outside the main entrance. So we are not having people necessarily come into the building.
Got it.
Would each individual person need to stop and pick up, or could one person come out and get breakfast for a couple of families?
We are continuing to work on some of those details. Mr. Holgi has been leading the food team, or one of the leaders of the food team, so we will ask some of those.
So the regulations say that it has to be picked up by a student or their parent. So it would be a family unit that would be able to pick that up, is the way we're treating that.
With respect to the student or parent, if parent presents, how do we validate that that is the parent of the student at our district? Or are we concerned with that at this point?
We are running it very similar to what we run our summer food program. It's actually a part of the summer food service program. So it's, anybody can come in, any community member can come in and pick up for their kids and things like that. So we aren't tracking, we don't have to document who it is that specifically is coming in, just have to have a reasonable belief that the group that's coming is a family unit or the student individually.
And that's consistent with the message that I saw from Minneapolis Public Schools today as well, which is if you are a child in Minneapolis, you are eligible.
Yep. So students can come up on their own, any child within the community can come up, we're not verifying that.
So for grades six through 12, the distance learning, I'm sure, will be communicated over the Chromebooks. Is there a plan yet for K-5, or is that something that'll be determined over the next two-week period?
We are currently in process, and so essentially the goal of the next eight days, we have tried to do one piece at a time. Today, we focused on our students, allowing them to come to school so that if families needed time for childcare, we also were able to send some bags of food home and to make sure that we had students with all the materials. Tomorrow, we are focusing on staff. We are getting all of them their assignments and doing that work. And then from Wednesday on, we're going to be developing all the specific components. The biggest mindset shift that we have to make sure, the biggest deep understanding we need all of our adults to understand is, this is a new learning module. This is instruction, the best possible education we can provide where we are not physically located together. And so we are taking this as seriously as we do with any other curriculum writing. And so we're talking about planning lessons and lesson delivery, we're talking about assessment and grading, how do we manage IEPs, how do we provide professional development to our staff, how do we report and create a teaming model, and how do we do all of those pieces? Those are all the things that we are making sure that we are working together with our educators to tackle.
Because you just said IEPs, that was the one thing that I have been trying to think through, is what does it look like in a distance learning for our students with disabilities in terms of providing services and accommodations? And so I imagine that is a very big task for our team, and so it's something that I would love to hear more about as we get further down the road, is how we are going to make those accommodations happen for our students with disabilities.
So some of the methodology, including electronic, does allow for further differentiations and further serving of IEPs. We also have had initial conversation or an initial planning. We had our specialized team leads and team together today, talking about work boxes and figuring out, along with our food delivery, possible options for materials delivery as is appropriate and as is needed, and things that we're going to have to, again, work out each of those details over the next few days.
Do we have a sense of how connected our students who are in grade six and up are if we're relying on the Chromebooks? I know that historically we've talked about, I believe we've handed out hotspots and things like that to ensure connectivity. Are we relying on that, or how do we monitor that connectivity?
So our outreach workers, social workers, counselors, and clerical team are going to be communicating with families over this next week to check in, to make sure we have correct contact information, correct ability to contact people back and forth. We did hand out a significant number of hotspots and are planning to continue that. We also have been made aware, and we are sharing information in each of our communications around, right now Comcast and Xfinity are providing hotspots and also free internet to new subscribers for 60 days and/or during the shutdown, and then partners with BestBuy are looking at similar components, that as long as we are dealing with this, there's indications that there will be free internet and free Wi-Fi provided in a wide range to really support our community.
When it comes to our, so if we have an extended period where the campus is closed, does that include those who rent out space or groups that we've partnered with or that have partnered with us as their building of record?
Right. We are working on some of those details, so there are multi-year leases that some of our renters are utilizing and having. As we determine our ability to facilitate or support them still being in, we're going to have to make those decisions on a case-by-case basis. Like, for example, right now, Fun Club, who is partnering with us, will continue. There may come a time where, depending on guidance from the government, we actually can't continue that. And so we just don't know as some of these things continue to play out. But we are not breaking leases at this point. We are going to continue working collaboratively with people.
I guess I have a bunch more questions, but you've hinted that so many of the details are TBD, and I trust that the requisite level of thoughtfulness is there. I don't need to elaborate on them.
We have been very cautious to try to lay things out. One of the challenges people have, and there's a lot of obviously stress and anxiety in our community right now, one of the challenges is that we are taking things one step at a time. We really urged our adults to focus on the students today. We are really going to focus on our adults and their assignments tomorrow, and then beginning Wednesday, we are really going to continue building out the distance learning model. As we look at governor proclamations, if we think about just how much things have changed, on Friday, the thought was to keep schools open. Over the weekend, the thought is to close schools, and now we're looking at additional closures across multiple communities, and so we really just don't know, and obviously that can be a time of challenge for many, but we just don't know what the next things are that are going to come as a community, or as a state, or as a country to really contain the virus to the best of our abilities.
Yeah, it was in one of our several conversations over the last few days that you broke it into phases in a way that has been really helpful for me. So this phase we're in right now is planning for between now and Wednesday, and rolling out the food and the care for healthcare and essential workers, and then making sure our students, as you said, get final access to get things, whether it's Chromebooks or whether it's medications, or whether it's things that were in their locker that they wanted to have at home. Phase two is Wednesday through, for us, April 6th, where we are not going to have students in buildings. We are going to have our staff developing, our instructional staff, developing the distance learning plans, and non-instructional staff doing some of these delivery, care, facility items. And then for us, after spring break on April 6th is when phase three really starts, which is distance learning, most likely for a to-be-determined amount of time. And so thinking about it in those ways and how do we plan for it in those ways has been helpful for me in trying to just make sense of the flood of new information, and I would also just say, the outreach from people who want to help and are looking for ways to support us as a district, our students, and the community at large in what are just completely uncertain times for everyone.
Right. And the biggest thing, we have also gotten a large number of folk who are wanting to pitch in and lend a hand. As we are launching this, we're asking them to hold off directly from a school's perspective until about April 6th or shortly after break. However, obviously, we aren't going to be able to cover the entire community with all the needs that people might have from a food perspective. Also, obviously, we could not necessarily give kids enough materials to keep them fully occupied, and so sharing links, sharing books throughout our community, different things people can do to help other members of the community. If this continues on in April and/or beyond, we anticipate certainly needing volunteers to continue supporting food distribution, possibly to continue with any of the other things that we're doing. And we will, I would say in that phase three, as we described after April 6th, we would be looking at helping to organize any volunteers around continued action and continued support for our schools and our school district.
Do the two of you have any questions or even just thoughts you want to share about how you're feeling right now? It's okay if you don't, but we always appreciate anything that you do want to share with us.
It's just crazy, I don't know, I'm kind of just shocked.
Yeah, that's fair.
I would just say the communication from the district and Steve has been really great for all of us, so that we have been kept in the know on all the work that they have been doing behind the scenes for a couple of weeks now, if not longer. And I think the communication out to our families has also been very strong, and they've gotten, as you guys have figured things out, the detail is coming out, but I really appreciate that, it's been really helpful for us.
We have had, and I will avoid naming any individuals, because obviously when you start naming people, you forget people, but we have had an incredible, at all levels of our district, we have had people putting in unbelievable hours, thinking way outside of their typical job responsibilities, and really pitching in as this one Richfield comes together. And the leadership and the teamwork has been incredible. It's amazing to be a part of. People are going so far above and beyond what the normal expectations are, working 14-hour days over their weekends to make sure that we are setting things up to the best of our ability for the kids, and I'm very proud to be part of the team of people who are in Richfield Public Schools.
We're grateful for all of you and hope that people can take some time to breathe and take care of themselves in the coming days as well, especially once we maybe get into Wednesday and have some of this first phase settled. So that is our wish for all of you, that you are taking care of yourselves so that you can continue to care for our staff and our kids and our community as well. Anything else?
Okay, we will move along to the next item on the amended agenda, which is approval of the consent agenda containing routine business items. Unless there is an item that somebody would like to have removed for individual consideration, we could entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I will move the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Ms. Smieszek. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the consent agenda is approved. So we will now take up the new business items that we are considering essential for district operation. So first is a resolution discontinuing positions for the 2020-2021 school year.
All right, so as Mr. Holgi steps up, I will pause very briefly and do an awkward transition so that he can introduce.
I like how your transition was just saying words more slowly.
You realize, it'd be the same thing you say. So very good. This is something that we do on an annual basis, it is a resolution discontinuing positions. We have taken a look at our budget for next year, staffing changes that are needed, and this is something we bring every year in March specifically for this purpose. Fortunately, we are only requesting a reduction of 3.58 FTE positions this year in our teaching staff. Much of this really has to do with fluctuations in course registrations, specific enrollment. We have looked as far as our budget next year and then trying to make sure that we're focused first of all on our class sizes and able to maintain those class sizes and make those adjustments that way. So most of what you'll see on the second page are really partials of positions, and that just kind of identifies the fact that we might be looking at one or two sections within a subject area, mostly at the middle school and high school within these specific areas. So with that, we'd ask for your approval of that resolution. This really kicks off the initiation of our staffing process moving forward.
Thank you. Any questions?
Craig, just to clarify, you'd mentioned this as an annual event for us in March, and some of that is driven by, you know, the start of our budget period, but also the contractual, we were required to notify people by a certain time?
Correct, correct. So if we have continuing contract teachers who are impacted by these position reductions, that's where we have to start this process in March. At this point, we don't anticipate that we will be needing to displace any of those teachers or place them on unrequested leave of absence, but we still want to make sure we stay in this process because it also leads into the budget piece.
Is it also a case that historically, if I'm working from memory, that this is, when we go through this, this is sort of a conservative view, because if we don't address it now, we can't do it later? So it's quite possible that these are walked back at some future date?
Correct, correct. So we've been working specifically with the middle school and the high school on their course registrations. They have their best guess, here's where we think it is. We were more conservative and cut a little bit deeper. At this point, all of these impact either temporary probationary positions, and then as we finalize that registration, high school just finished their registration process a few weeks ago, and so now it's putting that whole puzzle in place as far as how do we put those schedules in place to meet the needs of students and fit within our license areas.
And, okay, thank you. And lastly, I think you, I just want to point out, I think it's about three, is it three and a half FTEs roughly?
Three and a half, yep.
And we have district-wide approximately 300?
360 roughly.
360 FTEs or 360 staff members?
360 FTEs and teaching positions.
Okay. So this is one, one and a half percent?
Yep.
Okay. I have no more, thank you. With that, I'll move the resolution as presented.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Paulus and a second by Ms. Malick. Any further discussion? As this is a resolution, I will pull the board. Tensing?
Aye.
Smieszek?
Aye.
Malick?
Aye.
Paulus?
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the resolution is approved. Next up, we have a bid award for asbestos abatement at Richfield High School.
Thank you. This is a request for approval of the bid award for the 2020 asbestos abatement at Richfield High School, requesting that award be go, or record, it's been a long day. Recognizing that that bid award be awarded to Echo Midwest for $235,200. There were seven bids who responded to this, and that detail is included in the package as well. This has been managed in partnership with IEA and ICS, two of our project managers in this work.
Thank you.
I hope I live to the day where all of the asbestos has been removed from our buildings.
That'd be great.
So what is the impact of school closure on the construction? We are evaluating that right now. Some of these projects, given the fact that we have a closure here, at least up till spring break, we had some work that we were anticipating taking place during spring break. We may be able to be starting that ahead of schedule, which hopefully will get people back into their classrooms earlier. At the same time, we are well aware that this labor, this situation is impacting labor across industries, and so we are monitoring that carefully and trying to partner with those contractors and subcontractors to make sure that the environment that we're working on is safe and appropriate and that they're utilizing time that is available. So we're watching it. We don't know yet because there are so many uncertain times tied with these other pieces, but when possible, we're trying to get ahead of the schedule, especially at this point just right now.
I would add, I was at the construction committee meeting last, it was last week, and they had already anticipated the possibility, if students weren't in school, would they be able to come in? So they have been very thoughtful and proactive on kind of trying to plan on taking advantage of that if it's possible.
That's great. Is it fair to assume that ICS plays the role of working with the different companies that are in our buildings around safety for their staff?
I would say the general contractors on each one of those is probably more responsible for that area of working with the subs. ICS is really operating as our owner's rep to give another set of eyes and another set of expertise in that area for managing it. So advising, problem-solving, we really have multiple heads kind of working in this that are participating in project oversight, as well as in the different construction meetings, trying to mitigate those risks, staff appropriately, yeah.
Any questions?
I will move that we approve the change order as presented.
How about the bid award?
The bid award. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We've seen a lot of change.
We have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Ms. Malick. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the bid award is approved. Next is a grant connected to Safe Routes to Schools work.
So thank you. In January, we, the board approved us applying for this Safe Routes to Schools boost grant award. We're here to announce the fact that we have received that bid award, so we're really excited. This is actually now the third Safe Routes to Schools grant that has been approved for Richfield, our coordinator grant. There's an engineering grant that was applied for in partnership with the city that's going to do some investigation around the STAMIN-RDLS program, and then this is a boost grant specifically for Centennial Elementary School. It was an amount just upwards of $12,000 to help support some of the programming that is designed at that location. So this, we are asking for that approval that's required in resolution to actually receive that grant.
Oh, this is a resolution? Thank you, I was going to mess that up. I just want, I met our Safe Routes to School coordinator at one of the strategic planning meetings and told him how excited I am that he is with us and how eager we are to have him come to a board meeting at a to-be-determined date at this point, but it's exciting to see this work continue.
I'll move the resolution as presented.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Paulus and a second by Mr. Tensing. Any further discussion? As this is a resolution, I will pull the board. Tensing?
Aye.
Smieszek?
Aye.
Malick?
Aye.
Paulus?
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the grant authorization is approved.
Thank you.
So achievement and integration plan.
All right, so this is something that we are running by the board, is required every three years, although it has a yearly update. Achievement and integration plans are things that become the overall guiding documents to begin the achievement and integration funding, which provides around $1 million to Richfield Public Schools to support integration of our students and also, obviously, all of our students' achievement. We are identified as a district, and districts get identified to partner. It's a racially isolated district, which means that we have schools that are at least 25% 25% racially different than those in neighboring districts. And so, it's a very diverse district. We are significantly different in terms of our students from some of our surrounding districts, including Edina, Southwest Minneapolis area, and some of the schools in Bloomington. Those are some of our partners within the integration plan. And so, what we do is we bring together a team that includes our American Indian Parent Advisory Council, and a wide range of representatives across our buildings, students, staff, and also parents. You can see that list within our plan. Lines up three types of goals, talking about reducing disparities across our students, reducing disparities across access, and then also increasing racial and economic integration. And so, you'll see specific database goals around increasing our graduation rate, improving our culturally responsive teaching, and then also continuing to increase the representation of students of color in our college-bearing credit classes. You also see a set of strategies and key indicators that will be utilized to try to accomplish these achievement and integration goals, and much of this also aligns to some of the academic work and some of the HR work that we are doing within our overall strategic plan that we will see developed as we figure out how to continue our strategic plan 2020 to 2025 work, as we continue to move ourselves forward. And so, again, I'm presenting this overall plan to you tonight. The goal is to be able to approve and sign, and that allows us to access the funding for the next three years, and then we can continue refining and improving our plan as we do on a yearly basis. So, with that, I'm going to open it up for questions.
I have a question about the council that we have, the list of staff members, parents, and students. We have two parents, but one of them is notably a district employee, and so, could be construed as a staff member. Is there any? And I'm not doubting that person's ability to wear both hats, but it just, in terms of optics, does it look like we have not found enough parent input from folks who have a more distant or objective view of how we operate?
That is a fair question and a fair possible criticism. And we also have, for what it's worth, several others that are on here that are not actually identified as teacher, or as parents, but they are also staff. But yes, we do communicate this out in our, in several of our meetings, but yes, we do not have a large parent representation on this particular group. It is important to note that we do have, did have meetings with the American Indian Outreach Group, and so, there is also some additional parents that then sign off and are partnering as part of that group, rather than within this specific list. These are the ones working on the specific plan itself.
I mean, I know we have a number of committees, and that is one of our challenges that comes up again and again when we have district advisory committees and things, where we need, where we have to work hard to find parents and community members to fill those roles. And so, it just, that's, I recognize as I go through the rest of the list, there are some who are listed, staff members who I do recognize as well as parents, but...
Absolutely.
The indicators of progress and other strategies and goals you'd mentioned, there is perfect almost overlap between our, the annual goals that we have for you and our strategic plan, correct? So, it's, you could argue there's a chicken and egg thing here. Which one did we, which one was written first? Did we write the goals for the year with this in mind, or do the goals that we had for the year overlap with, align with this already? So...
We do a lot of collaboration across all of those goals. So, ultimately, in the end, our strategic plan is the one large guiding document. From that, we all have a set of different plans, including the achievement and integration piece, but then I have my goals with a set of staff leaders who report to me, who have their goals, and then a set of leaders who report to them. And then, within our buildings, there are professional learning communities and teams that have similar goals that all nest within each other, which is a way we try to really align our work.
My question was, once we have this plan, it's been submitted to the state, we receive the funding, what does accountability or support look like from the state level related to this?
Accountability is a yearly report, and then also, with our funding, we are reporting, we create a budget that goes along with this, and specifically aligns then staffing to this. And so, as we think about things like outreach workers, or some of our other cultural liaison staff and some of the work that we're doing, they are specifically funded through this, and then have specific tasks related to accomplishing achievement and integration work. And so, there is budget accountability, and then there is also some reporting that goes along with the World's Best Workforce. There used to be separate reports, those have now been combined. And so, with our World's Best Workforce report, that goes to the state and also reports back goals for achievement and integration.
Any other questions or comments? Then, we could entertain a motion to approve the achievement and integration plan.
I move to approve the achievement and integration plan as presented.
Second.
So, we have a motion by Ms. Smieszek, and a second by Mr. Paulus. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the plan is approved. And then, finally, we do have some donations that have been made to the district in recent weeks.
Yes, we are very pleased for a couple of donations that we are accepting today. Richfield High School received $10,274.40 from the Richfield Quarterback Club for a variety of equipment used by the Richfield High School football team in the 2019 season. So, we are very thankful to the ongoing and long support of the Richfield Quarterback Club to our high school football team. And then, Spartan Food Shelf received $80 from Terry and Debbie Allstrom. So, thank you to the Allstroms for their donation to their Spartan Food Shelf.
I will move that we accept these donations with gratitude.
Second.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Tensing, and a second by Mr. Paulus. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the donations are accepted with gratitude. So, we have the advanced planning section of the agenda, which always begins with a legislative update, and there has been a lot of action on that front. So, I'm not sure if there's anything that folks would like to share in addition to what we already touched on in the coronavirus update earlier.
Most of the days at the Capitol have been canceled. They're looking at possibly shortening legislative components over the course of this year, so we don't exactly know what work is going to look like at the Capitol, but basically, much like in schools, everything down at the Capitol has changed. And right now, COVID-19 is the conversation, the first conversation, and the last conversation.
Understandably so.
That's, I mean, I think that's where we're at right now, and we'll see how the rest of the session shakes out.
Okay. Next, if there is any information and/or questions that members of the board would like to share with each other while we are here.
I had mentioned to some board members, I participated in a conference call last Thursday about the virus, and boy, have things changed since then. And so, it would, you're all up to speed on it, but I did tell some of you that I would report back publicly on what I learned, and what I learned is, you're all, it's been covered.
Thank you for attending.
No, no problem. It was an awful time.
Oh, Cam, have you been waiting to use that?
Well, no, that's, no, I did not intend that, sorry.
That was good. I liked it.
I would just expand a little bit on my comment about the construction committee and the meeting that they had. So, even just beyond thinking forward, if there aren't students, what work could be done, they were really forward-thinking in things like equipment and things that they're getting, and where it's coming from, and what will that supply chain be affected, and where else they can get it. So, just really wanted to compliment all of their work on how proactive they were being and thoughtful on planning ahead to do the best they could for us. It was very impressive to hear, so...
I know that in the big scheme of things, this feels very small, but we were going to have a strategic planning session this Thursday evening, but almost certainly is canceled, given the circumstances. So, I assume communication will go out about that specific event, but also just how we are going to evolve our strategic planning process this spring in light of the changes to our school calendar.
Yes.
And gatherings.
With communication and technology, we have determined methods and ways to begin to gather feedback in an online fashion. I will be honest, we have moved that a little bit lower in our priority list. We are working on the things for yesterday, or today, and tomorrow, we will start our planning on distance learning. And hopefully, by the end of this week, or at some point during the next week, we will begin to launch out ways to gather additional input and continue to synthesize for our next strategic plan.
Yep. I mean, I think that just, you know, in terms of kind of reflecting on, sort of summing up where we're at, I mean, we know that this particular virus, this particular epidemic will pass, and this is a, you know, we already have, you know, clear evidence from China where the outbreak started, that it wanes, just like any epidemic does. And so, this thing has a life cycle of its own, and it will do what it's going to do. And so, we are in the process right now of sort of riding that wave. I think where I have great faith, you know, I have obviously great faith in the capacity of this board and this organization to come together and work on behalf of our community and our students. And we've already, have a fair testimony to how that is happening, and will continue to happen. And then, where we will enter that next phase, you know, so once this public health sort of phase has passed, then there will be a phase of recovery. And so, I think during that phase, you know, that's not sort of a health-related recovery, but an economic recovery, and the sort of dealing with the economic implications. So, I think that's where we will need to be, continue to be mindful, and continue to be aware that we are all in this together, and we're supporting each other.
As always, we are so fortunate to have a medical doctor on our school board. So, thank you for your words, and also just thanks to you and the other healthcare workers who are really at the heart of what we are doing and how we are trying to respond at the state and global level. So, thank you. So, beginning to wrap up here, our first meeting of April is scheduled for Monday, April 6th. We will continue to evaluate how to proceed with that meeting in the coming weeks to ensure that we have a strong plan in place to conduct our essential business of the district, while also focusing on staff, community, and board member health and safety. And also, of course, we will ensure that any meeting modifications we might make, such as virtual meetings, would be done in alignment with the Minnesota Open Meeting Law. So, last but not least, are there any items that board members would like to request for discussion at an upcoming meeting with all the uncertainty that I just shared? Okay, we will stay in close contact with the community, and in fact, I saw that the latest daily email just went out to families. So, thank you for the hard work that has gone into making that update happen, basically on a daily basis and in multiple languages, all at the same time. It's incredibly important, and as Christine said, has been really clear, and I think provided a great sense of confidence and calm in what can be very scary times. So, the final item of business on the agenda is to adjourn. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Paulus, and a second by Ms. Smieszek. I'm going to give it to her. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the meeting is adjourned at 7:44 PM.